The April 11th, 2022 Ohio County Board of Education is called order at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge allegiance of the flag of the country. Fledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to this rainy Monday. Nice to see your crowd joining us this evening. Dr. Miller, would you give us the superintendent's information, please?
Of course, lots of wonderful things to share with the Board of Education. First off, by welcoming everybody here this evening with us. And we'll kick it off with a reminder to everyone that tomorrow, the annual Ohio County Schools Celebration of Arts will be held from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock at Wheeling Park High School. Our students will have amazing work on display. We will have performances taking place and it's just a wonderful, wonderful evening. Also, West Virginia University President Gordon, E. Gordon Gee, visited Wheeling Park High School on Friday. When I ran into him, he was taking a tour with students and he couldn't say enough positive things about all of the things that are happening, not only the physical atmosphere of the building, but what our students were doing in the classroom and he was very complimentary, indicating how he believed our students were well-prepared when they leave us at Wheeling Park. So it was a wonderful, wonderful trip and really glad that we're on his radar. Wheeling Park High School Machine Tool Technology students are partnering with Wheeling Nipon Steel and the project was featured on WTRF, WTOV9, and the Intelligencer. Our students are creating a grapple for Wheeling Nipon that will be used to lift rolls of paper weighing 200 pounds or more. So it's pretty awesome that our students are actually doing things in the classroom and applied in real-world situations. Also, Wheeling Park High School Concert Band earned superior ratings and received an overall superior rating for the 37th consecutive year on April 6th at the West Virginia SSAC Band Festival held at John Marshall High School. Eight Ohio County Schools' teachers were winners of the 2022 Math for Life Classroom Educator Grant. Collectively, they were awarded $6,770 for their classrooms. Winning teachers included Middle Creek Elementary School Michelle Titus Glover, Madison Elementary School Eileen Gilmore, Madison Elementary School Megan DeGrava, Madison Elementary School Jenna Bougai, Bethlehem Elementary School Genevieve Fields, Warwood School Ellen Now, Warwood School Annie Vogel, and Warwood School Amanda Finley. And we're very proud of them and appreciate all they do outside the class. Wheeling Park High School History Teacher Chalmer Moffett was named as the first ever WTRF Golden Apple winner for going the extra mile for his students. A WTRF news team and representative from the health plan surprised him in his classroom with a check for $250 to be used for academic purposes. And we're really proud of him and what he does. The Wheeling Symphony Orchestra began its annual tour of young people's concerts on April 4th at the JV Chambers Performing Arts Center. Ohio County Schools' elementary students attended the concerts and seemed to enjoy all of the performances. Tridelfia Middle Schools Raiders Helping Raiders Organization held a donation drive for the Ohio County Animal Shelter and shelter representatives visited the school to collect contributions on April 2nd. And I will say that I was present for this and the animals that they brought. I don't know how they made it out of the building, the kids were so happy, the teachers were happy, and the collections were fantastic. So I'm proud of them for going that extra mile. Woodstale Elementary School held its annual mental health fair on April 2nd. The event was held in partnership with Wheeling Y WCA and West Liberty University. Ally Kangasir, Woodstale Elementary School counselor, spoke to the media during the event and discussed the importance of students' mental health and schools' efforts to meet the students' needs. I'd like to give a shout-out to Mr. Rogers and Ohio County School staff for all the work, along with everyone else at Wheeling Park High School yesterday preparing for the OVAC All-Star Girls and Boys Football Game. Or I'm sorry, Basketball Game. I was there too. The coming note was basketball. And finally, I'd like to thank David Crum, Ohio County School staff, Mr. Dai, and many others who worked around the clock, as they do every single year, preparing for the Dick Dai Classic. As everybody knows, the slip on the hillside was corrected and Mother Nature was a little not cooperative this year with all the overabundance of rain and we had a significant amount of mud that had to be cleaned up. So in the end, the day was fantastic for our student athletes and certainly want to thank Caston Baker as well for their assistance in the city of Wheeling for the use of their water buffalo. But in the end, it was a muddy mess. However, when you get people that come together for the right reasons for our student athletes and take care of a situation, it's really great. And like I said, we do this, they bustle around every year to get ready for the event, but this was really an amazing feat to put this all together. So very appreciative to all the work. I think Todd's in the back row, very appreciative for all that you do for our student athletes. And again, it was another great year and look forward to what we have in store for next year. That was a lot. Oh, and finally, just want to share one more thing with you. These are Steenrod Elementary Schools' passion project that they are raising money, but these are some of the things that our elementary students are making in the schools. And they will be doing, isn't there a passion project? And I can just pass them around for you to take a look. Now I'm finished, for now.
Yeah, I think, are they selling those?
Sure.
I think they are.
Yes.
I'll sell you some right now.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any questions for Dr. Miller on her superintendent's information? There are none, we'll move on to moments from mission. Pete, would you kick us off?
Sure. Most of the stuff Dr. Miller just said, but I especially like to recognize the award winners, our teachers who were award winners, who were some of my former students. That makes me very happy.
Outstanding. Molly?
Sure, I had the opportunity this weekend to attend the Ohio County Strings Event, that thing for strings that they have up at Camp Russell. It's always a great event, so many people there, it's just a lot of fun, great music, and a great cause. So that was a good event, very well done by all the volunteers and everyone who puts that event on. I love the partnership, Dr. Miller mentioned it, but between our machine tool tech students and an actual business, that's just fabulous. I think that's one of the things we're trying to do with our CTE program is get our students connected with actual businesses and people in the community so they can do real-world work. I mean, that's incredible training to get while you're still in high school. So congrats to everyone who was involved in putting that on and making that happen. And then as to the track, I heard from a parent friend who, child goes to Canada Mac, but they were at the track event and he said the surface of the track looks amazing. So once we get the mud and all that cleaned up, it's gonna be a great facility. So that was the compliment from an athlete that came in from another school.
Thank you, Molly. Grace?
First off, I think our band, Wheeling Park Band Program has kind of chased the debate team for the lead in state championships, but they've taken another one, 37 straight. And want to congratulate them for that and for all the hard work that they've done. And the teachers, again, are going the extra mile. I mean, our Math for Life teachers have just done really a lot of extra duty to trying to make sure that the kids get everything they can possibly get and they're getting some rewards for it financially. And I like to see that because they're plowing that right back into the program.
Thank you, Grace. Chris?
I feel like I commend the newspaper because I think we've had great coverage for Gordon Gee's visit, the project that our kids are doing with Miss Insidious Eel, and we've really made some strides there. So I really appreciate that. Pass that on. And I want to shout-out to our Beyond Education students, Josie Martin, Devon Poole. They both volunteered at Richie's Easter egg hunt that he gave put on on Saturday. So that's great, they're getting out, they're getting some reading and we really appreciate it.
Outstanding. And that's just a handful of things, of the good things Ohio County Schools are involved in. I was fortunate to work, or maybe not, the race on Saturday and we literally saw every weather, every bit of weather you can imagine. But the thing about working that, that gives me the most satisfaction are the community members that contribute their time. It's great to see Todd and Sean Dai running around like crazy trying to get kids organized and adults and hurdles where they belong. And it was especially special that day because they honored my former middle-distance coach, Ken Steiner, who is an amazing person, if you don't know Ken. He really helped a lot of young athletes push themselves beyond what they knew they could do. It was an honor to be beside Ken and take his picture again and he's aged much better than the rest of us have. Zach Abraham and I just shook our heads going, how does this guy do it? But it was a Herculean task on what David Crum and his crew did to clean that up. As Dr. Miller said, as much as Ohio County Schools would like to control the weather, that's not on our agenda nor is it within our powers. We've had an extremely wet spring and mud settled in, but with the help of the city, with their buffalo truck, I didn't know what a buffalo truck was until David explained that to me. And Caston Baker putting in some soot, is it a soot fence, is that what they call it?
Silt.
Silt socks. Silt sock.
Silt sock.
Alright, so silt socks were placed in. And talking to Doc, he was like, I didn't know we'd ever reach concrete. They were going back and forth with machines. So it was an all-hands-on-deck effort so that we could put our best foot forward for the visiting team. So my sincere gratitude for David and all that contributed to clean it up. And Todd Dai, thank you for your commitment to this track meet and, you know, we need to keep it at a standard that qualifies to carry your dad's name. Alright, do we have any delegations today? Alright, and parade of champions, Dr. Miller.
Mrs. Dillon, thank you for being here.
Thanks for inviting us.
We love when you bring your kids.
I am very excited to have our students here. I am Caroline Dillon and I'm representing Wheeling Park's Career Technical Education Program tonight and Skills USA. And if the students who are going to be recognized, if you would come up, as well as Mr. Bougai and Mrs. Bougai, please. And I will begin. We have not everyone, but we sure have a nice crowd. We took, under the direction of Mrs. Dill Hillberry and Mr. Walt Bougai, 27 Career Technical Education students, you all would come over here, please, thank you, to Fairmont State University a couple of weekends ago for the 2022 Skills USA West Virginia State Leadership Conference and Skills Conference. And 17 students from Wheeling Park out of the 27 placed in the state in the top three, so either bronze, silver, or gold. I'm very, very proud of them. And with us tonight, well, I'll read all of them and then tell you who is also here with us. Anaya Sparks placed for Culinary Arts, is a bronze medalist. Ashley Edge and Anna Parks did for Wedding Cake Design. And Leah Coleman and Ethan Waldeck placed in bronze for Interactive Application and Video Game Design, all in third place. Silver medalists are, and we're carrying on the Dai tradition at Wheeling Park High School, McKenna Dai and her partner Makaya Struthers placed second in Audio-Radio Production. Ava Lapata is here and she and Jenna McGuire and Lauren Taylor placed second for Promotional Bulletin Board. Ava also was re-elected as a state officer for the second year in a row for Skills USA, which is a very big honor for Ava and brings a lot of accolade to Wheeling Park and makes us very proud. Travis Henry, who single-handedly saves the radio-tellevision program on a daily basis with his technology, placed second in Information Technology Services. Julia Creighton and Cole Wilkinson placed second for Television-Video Production. Luke Wright is here with us today and this is the second year that he competed and he placed second for Employment Application Process, which is a nice honor. We have three gold medalists. Charlie Elanfow is a defending state champion for extemporaneous speaking and he placed first. John Johnson placed first for manual lathe. And Aleah Pelley is here and she actually double-booked herself, placed first for Prepared Speech. She did it remotely, we asked permission for Skills USA to let her compete remotely because she planned to go and raise money to go to Skills USA and on the Washington DC trip. They allowed it to happen, we didn't think it would happen and she got first place. So it's just amazing. Aleah and Charlie have qualified to go to Nationals this summer in Atlanta. And the breaking news that happened last week that we were very excited about, and I think I was maybe more excited than McKenna and Makaya, but the first-place people in Audio-Radio Production are unable to attend and only because our students who got second place, McKenna and Makaya, scored high enough, they have been invited to attend Nationals as well. So we will now have four people. So we are very grateful at Wheeling Park High School for Mrs. Bougai, our Career Technical Education Director, for Mr. Bougai and Mrs. Hillberry, who are our Skills USA advisors, but especially for our students. They worked very hard, spent a lot of hours. It was not easy. We were tired, they were tired, but it has been a very nice event to go to and we're very grateful to you for allowing this to happen.
Well, thank you all, thank you for the terrific performances. One question I have is, do we have some underclassmen that are learning from the fine work these young folks have done?
We do, we have McKenna, Travis isn't leaving us. Charlie, Luke, and Aleah are seniors and Ava will be a senior next year. So we are continuing that on.
And other kids are rolling in and learning from what they've done.
Yes, definitely, and Cole and Julia will be back next year and Makaya will be back. So we are building it.
Outstanding, thank you so much. Any questions, anybody from the board? Not hearing any. Thank you so much, congratulations.
And if we could, if you all could go out there, we'd like to get a picture of you all, please. Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Bougai, make sure you get in there.
Outstanding. Moving on to item six on our agenda, reports and follow-up action, bond update, Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you. Quickly, before we talk about the baseball field, just wanted to give a report on Elm Grove and Middle Creek. I think we are finally through our planning stages. It's been a long battle at Elm Grove to try to figure out the best thing for that building. But I think after several meetings and a lot of brainstorming, we've gotten to a place now that we can start that process moving forwards. That's been pretty exciting for us. At Wheeling Park, things are continuing to get done. They've started on the Senior Commons. They've started and are making a lot of progress in the counseling offices, they're going up fast. So even the things that you all saw on our tour, there's been even more added. So we need to get everybody back up there before too long. Woodsdale is progressing very nicely and quickly. One side is basically done, the other side has already been gutted. It will start to get constructed shortly and the addition is started. There's a big giant hole you see every day, Mr. Croft will show when you ride by. So things are really going well with all those projects. With the baseball field, just Mr. Isaac is here from Astroturf. They are the company that did our multipurpose softball, soccer, lacrosse field at the high school and did an outstanding job. We are at the point now that, like I said at the last meeting, we need to vote either hopefully at this meeting or the next one. If we can do it by the next one, that would enable them, if approved, to get the field done in time for fall ball, which they play a lot of games. Anytime after that, we're cutting it probably too close to having done for fall ball. I do want to point out, so I gave you guys the plans last week. So if you had any questions, today's a good day to ask Mr. Isaac those questions. I spent a little bit of time with Stevie Myers, the baseball coach, and Chad Stout, his assistant, last week, talking more about the project. And one thing they did want me to point out was how much different people below us in the state, which is everybody, how much better situations they have because of how much different the weather is. If you just get down towards Charleston, they go down there and will tell the coaches when they scrimmage, "We haven't been outside yet." And the coaches in Charleston will say, "We haven't been inside yet." So we cancel a lot more games than everyone else does. I think this year alone, we've only played six out of 16 games that were scheduled to play. Just a guess, because today a game's gonna get canceled whether they have turf or not. But I'm guessing, I'm just again guessing, we'd probably play 12 or 13 of those games out of 16 if we had this facility where it needed to be. That's the only other info I have. We did get some pricing today. We put it on the agenda because the pricing wasn't done. So the pricing did come in today. There's been a little bit of increase with, I could let Mr. Isaac talk about that, but correct me if I'm wrong, price of rubber, price of turf, price of different things has gone up, which increased it from the last time that we got an estimate several months ago. And again, as I said at the last meeting, not my ask or recommendation, looking, I'm not looking for a recommendation for lights or anything or approval for lights. I believe we can get those set up to do it at a later cost, which will probably save us about $400,000 now. But that's up to the board, if the board wants to entertain lights, that's great. You certainly can, that's just not what I'm asking for, only the turf at this point. And I think that's about all I have. Wanted Mr. Isaac just to say a couple of words, I didn't ask him to present or anything like that, but just to come in case you all had questions, he's not from the area. So we appreciate your comment and...
Certainly. Let's go to everybody again. Yeah, great to ask me to come out and basically answer questions, I didn't have anything formalized. But as we're except, the price went up some, I mean, I think when we originally did the proposal, I think we were paying $2.85 for gas. So we've taken some serious increase on some of the raw materials. And, you know, so that's, except that...
So what's the cost?
1.4, we estimated 1.2. So it was about, over the past few months since we got the first estimate, about $200,000 increase, which seems pretty standard if you...
It was 1.35. I'm gonna sit over here, 1.35. But I have to make an adjustment because I spoke with John this morning and he told me that the B and O tax would not be applicable, which is 2% on it. It's a decent size.
So do we have a breakdown of the cost in exactly what you're doing versus the artwork, versus the surface, versus, I mean, I need to understand exactly what you're doing.
We could break that down. It's all in the scope, because it's completely, you know, the fencing, the curbing, the excavation of it, the underground drainage, the riprap, everything that's on that print defining for the turf. You said the plans out, right? But I could certainly have it broke out into more detailed scope. I thought the scope, the verbiage in our proposal is usually pretty detailed.
Yeah, but I want to see the costs to go with everything. I mean, what are our options? How do we get what we need as far as the field? I mean, I look back at the softball field and in hindsight, I might have voted differently on some of the aspects that were done. I don't want to make that mistake again. So I want to see a breakout of those costs for the different components of this field.
Okay. We could certainly provide that.
Yeah, that comes to that number so that we can say, okay, well, does this particular component make sense? Do we have other questions relating to that component on the cost? A gross number of $1,350 is not enough detail for me to adequately be informed to vote in favor of that.
I don't, we could certainly break that out for you. I can tell you from, as far as breaking it out for like what to make choices on it. You have the turf, there's certain grades of turf that you could do, certain design features that can change cost, okay? Big logos cost more money than small logos, stuff like that, changes the colors and things like that. Underneath that turf, the storm drainage is DEP. There's not a lot of options down there. You have to provide a retention amount of water that's in there, the design has to meet their standards.
Has that been part of, for that, that part of the job?
The way we're proposing is through cooperative purchasing.
Is to what?
Through cooperative purchasing, through AEP.
Kind of like our state contract.
Okay.
Is that for the whole thing or just the turf itself? Are you...
The whole thing.
Cooperative purchase?
We have cooperative purchasing of the whole thing. Yeah, it's all on the state terms bids. But to answer your question, I could certainly break it out for you, that's not an issue. But from, like I said, from the turf down, the curbing, the proper way to build it, there's not a lot of options here. The size of the pipe, I mean, part of the reason the price went up was we had a two-foot by three-foot trench for the collectors to meet the DEP requirements, they're six by six. And we did have a few, we had a few extra things that I have to elaborate. We have a couple of, we put two foul poles in it. We had a couple more gates for access reasons, so that also was part of the increase in the cost as well.
So your proposal, I'm just looking at this, that was sent.
The designs, yeah.
Yeah, so you guys would be doing the drainage, the turf, the fencing, the curbing?
Correct, the fence will be subbed out. We have a subcontract, same, absolutely fence, the same folks have put the fence up around the softball soccer field, the new one.
So that, all of that though is in this 1.35?
Correct. Yeah, we have everything in there from the standpoint of the desk. Unless there's some sub-soil issues out there, which we're not aware of, you know, something totally unforeseen.
What's the fence gonna look like?
Same as that matching the fence that's there now on the new field.
On the softball field? Could we just use a softball field on the baseball field, use that fence instead of buying another one?
Use the existing fence?
Well, you said the fence for the softball field, which is perfect.
Maybe I misunderstood, could you? The fence that will be being installed matches the new fence that was put in on the new field.
Like you mean the exterior black chain link?
Yes. Black vinyl fence.
So is a new fence mandatory in this project?
No.
Yeah, that kind of goes along with some of my questions too, like, does this include dug, brand-new dugouts? Old pens, anything like that?
No, the existing infrastructure's all there. Dugouts, the backstop fencing.
So none of that was...
The new fencing is going, the new fencing is going from the dugouts on each side down and we figured in a new piece for black vinyl against where, basically when you walk into the backstop between the dugout and the press box, there's an area there that has some old fencing there, very rough.
So my understanding, the dugouts are quite nice and the dugouts were really funded by the baseball community, which was nearly $200,000 that the baseball community raised for those dugouts. So they will not need to be, we'll not have to reinvent that wheel.
A lot of them like to use the existing fence that's there. If you look at the design, then put it over the existing field now, it's all brought in. So the right field fence, down the right field, you know, it kind of sweeps out and it creates a lot of square footage. We are actually bringing it in and taking it straight down, putting the bullpen on the outside of that. Okay, so you're actually shrinking up the ball field to not such a large space with inside that fence. The other part is to use the existing fence, is it mandatory, no, but there's some issues out there. We're redoing the outfield fence because if you go out there and stand there now, it's very wavy, okay?
Right.
It's not level and we make the field pretty level. Now, I mean, there's a pitch on it, don't get me wrong, but if you stand on a brand-new field from the eye, you don't see waves, it's, the plainer is there, so it's a one-quarter inch and 10 feet tolerance. Okay, just like up at the new field. It has a little bit of a crown on it, but when you stand on it, it's very difficult to see that. Left field, you've got a pretty large hill going up, okay? That fence up there is actually sits pretty high when you're standing at home plate. So to do it properly, yes, you'll replace the fence, that's part of the reason why it's in this scope. Could you use the existing fence that it is? You could, but you're gonna have a, you'll have a situation that your predecessors or people that come in after you are gonna ask, what were they thinking, what'd they do this for? Because it's, you're kind of taking, putting all this money into a beautiful turf field and then you're just going kind of, you're not completing the job, so to speak.
It's one view. The other is just being, you know, economical with our... The other is just being, you know, economical with our, with our community's money.
Sure.
Making sure that we are not throwing good money after bad. Will the two turf fields come together?
No. No, we still, so that hill in left field, the way it's planned out, we wanna, we wanna get it flat out there so that, so it's, from the safety perspective for the players out there, they're not seeing elevation changes when they're running after a fly ball in outfield. Once it comes in there to where the, the outfield fence is, we're gonna regrade a little bit of that, 'cause we're not actually gonna go in there, but it's gonna be a walking, it's gonna be acceptable by architectural standards for walking up that hill scale. Be a little bit of swail in there, so the water doesn't come out the field, funnels out as it does naturally right now. And of course blend that all in and still leave that batty cage in the back of the outfield.
So, the space between the two fields with main grass?
The, the space that's there now is pretty close to what the space is gonna be right now. Okay, area way after the, after the project is complete. We're not, we're not moving the fence, we're not moving the outfield fence in or out, we're pretty much keep it where it is, there's a little bit of changes there just to get it a more, a little more symmetry, so that your, your distances between the right, left field, power alleys, and the outfield are pretty similar, left and right field.
Okay.
One, one, I have one question. If you go with the original fencing that's there, what does that do to the bullpens, are they in the field of play?
It's a good question, on the right field line, they would have to be.
Which isn't a good situation.
They have to be because of how wide that fence is. Plus, I haven't figured out the square footage on that, it's a pretty large square. You're now, you're increasing the footprint of the turf. Or you would be cutting it off before the fence, and then you have a transition area to where the outfield already is running, and going from a turf surface to over a concrete curve and then onto a natural surface.
No, that's not good.
Um, so I've heard from a lot of baseball people that there's runoff from the softball field that's affecting the current baseball field, is that, you guys have a plan for that in your current idea of what you're gonna do with the runoff and drainage and everything?
What do you, just repeat that again.
I've been told that there is a problem with runoff from the softball field down onto the baseball field right now that creates a lot of the issues that they're seeing in the outfield of the baseball field. I just wanna make sure that people are aware that that, there's some kind of an issue there apparently.
We should make elsewhere maybe.
Oh, that, that, yeah, that's, oh, that's, I was told that's why the outfield of, of the baseball field is such.
I think some of the water that comes down.
That was an issue.
That was an issue before the softball field.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to keep the dirt on the baseball field because, you know, they're.
I've had two or three people tell me that, is that not true?
Is that, David?
The runoff has been there since, since before they did softball.
Left, left field, left field, the outfield area has always been damp, just because of the lay of the land. It hasn't become more or less, I would say, per se, because of what's been done up on the turf hill, it's just been that way, so.
So, that was the issue with left field and right field, you can tell a lot of people to catch a fly ball.
So, can you fix it? Could you fix the drainage along there, would there be?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, so.
Fix it.
Yeah, synthetic turf field, the way the EPA, the EP looks at it, is they look at it as a impervious surface. That's why we have to have to put large drainage into it, because of how they classify it. In reality, the way it really functions is you have six inches of retention basin out there filled with stone at a forty percent void. It will take a torrential downpour to fill that up. Most fields that, when most, all of them, we build them, we have such amount of retention in it, that during a heavy downstorm, if you go to the discharge, you don't see it right away. It actually comes out towards the next day and it fills up enough, because you have percolation in the subsoils, and it just takes a lot of time for it to move through the system. Unfortunately, in our industry, the way the EPA looks at, like I said, they classify it a little bit different, create some expenses on field owners to handle the water discharge in a certain way. But in reality, the, the field itself's gonna improve drainage.
Will it tie into the other field?
No.
So, where will the, the ultimate discharge find its way?
On the plans, if you, if you look at them, on the back of the outfield, towards center, we were talking a little bit about moving it to more right center, is a riprap discharge.
I just wanna keep it from coming back down the hill, which created our last problem at the track.
At the track.
Well, the water's flowing that way right now. If there is a desire on your guys' part to, to route it in another direction, I think that's something we have to talk with, with engineering about.
It's the same, I think.
But David would know certainly more about the overall flow of the water than.
Where's the water go from the soccer field, this new field? Does it go over the hill?
It goes, I think it splits on those sides, some comes out the left and some out the right side.
But it doesn't go directly back over the, the hill up, up on front, by the track?
No, no, straight down to the track.
So, it's splitting on either side, on the paved roadside, and then to the side that's left of the track?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, as long as we're, we're, I, I wouldn't wanna add, we're not a risk creating another slip because we're, we're placing all of that, that water onto the hillside.
In that regard, going back to what I said earlier about improving drainage, it will improve the drainage, you're not getting, once that field is saturated, that area, and you continue to have rain, it is, it's sheeting off, right? In this system, it can hold quite a bit of water before it starts to sheet off.
Okay.
You've got a, you're building a retention basin, basically.
Oh, one question here, on the drawing, are these bullpens on either end over here and here?
Those are the bullpens.
And those are turfed, within the turf?
They're, they're turfed and fenced with a gate to access them from inside the field and outside the field.
I don't have any more questions for Mr. Isaac.
One, one, one quick one, with, with the pitcher's mound, I've seen fields with dirt pitcher's mounds that are all turf. This one I understand is gonna be all, all turf, including the mound?
All turf, all turf.
And that compares favorably with a dirt mound?
So, I would say yes, I think you've talked to baseball purists, they like the dirt mound, I can tell you that the dirt mound are a maintenance nightmare. And I've seen in the last few years at the NCAA Division One, they're switching out. You know, I know WVU, we have their field, they've talked about it, they had the minor leagues, they have the minor leagues there, and they, they required it.
Yeah, it was a mess, it was a mess.
And, but it's a maintenance nightmare for them, it's created a lot of havoc. Like I said, a couple of their very large D one programs have switched. And they've, some of the, like, going out of Michigan, Vanderbilt, up to Michigan, down to Vanderbilt, those are, you know, two premier programs, they have turf mounds.
And, and the thing that I was wondering about was, you know, when pitchers go out and, you know, dig a hole in front of the rubber and all that kinda, that's not an issue with the, I mean, the mound isn't gonna be ruined by pitchers trying to.
It won't be ruined, but it's kind of an issue. Baseball, baseball is difficult on the surface, whether it's clay or turf. The way we build our systems is we have replacement panels, so we have one for each year of the warranty. It's very thick, it's a thicker turf than what we put on the rest of the field. It'll take, it takes quite a bit of abuse, but still, after years' use, and depending on how much plays on that field, sometimes you can get where it's matted down. That's where they, that's really the primary where you can almost start to wear it out. Easy part though is it's built for then, you can easily pull it up, fix it, level off the stone if you do have an issue with it, and put it back down, you're fine.
I was down in Morgantown this weekend, and the pitching mound on Friday was right around the side, was, I mean, it was a mess.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
Dirt mounds, I advise against it.
Actually, I did have one more question for you, actually on the other field. With that fence that we have, that temporary fence, should that be moved on a pretty regular basis so it doesn't create a rut, just sitting in that same spot?
So. I'd have to, I'd have to find, what I'd like to do, and what, what we should do, is figure out the weight of that, all right? And what the pounds per square inch is on that particular fence, and then compare it to what the state, what we were, we allow as a standard. Um, static, I think we're at like three PSI, and then, um, dynamic, I think we're at like twenty-five or thirty. So, it is acceptable to drive a vehicle over the, the field, you know, you're not gonna certainly damage it, certainly if the nameless is out there, something like that, is temporary. But when you start looking at the weight on the field, you gotta, you actually have to do the, the calculations on it to, to figure it out. I don't think it'll be an issue, but if, if you, David, I can get with you, if you find out what one section is, the weight of it, and then we'll just take an estimate of, based on the bar stock, how much bar stock there is, we'll figure out how many square inches roughly, each one of those has, and then we'll just figure out how much PSI is resting on the field. And if, if it's more than, than two to three PSI, then I'd say it's potential that you start displacing some stone under it over time.
We could just move fence.
You could.
And I just, I don't want a new field with a divot, because the fences has rested on it too long.
Sure. A lot of school useals I've, I've never seen.
Have you, so Washington and Jefferson has the same fence?
They do. They do, and, and when we replaced their field, I didn't notice, notice anything at, where that's at. Gannon University uses one, there's an, up all the walls, university uses one, same one you guys have over there, and I haven't seen any issues with theirs.
Okay. I'll get you what information I can.
And you're mentioning colleges, and it made me think, high school wise, are you seeing turf, is it becoming more popular, the same, or what are you seeing with high school fields?
When I started in the turf industry, it was about fifteen to one, fifteen football fields and fourteen one baseball. It seems like it's almost fifty fifty right now. Five of the six projects I'm working on this week are all baseball. Um, it's become, it's, it's become very popular, especially through the Ohio Valley, as you guys know, mostly in the Ohio side of the river. Um, all up, I mean, Edison, Steubenville, Toronto, Shady Side's doing a field, and then you go up the hill a little bit, and there's a few more schools up there. We start getting, you know, out, or out from here, so, you know, Harrison County and some of the other ones, it's, it's become, um, very popular.
Can Almond County do all this?
I'm not sure.
How many West Virginia baseball fields have you, you put in?
WVU, Hurricane County, we did theirs. We did another one for private, I can't remember exactly, that was involved, I don't know exactly who it was, down towards Central State. We're supposed to do Marshals, but they still, we have to get going on theirs, Marshall softball.
Do you mind those, mind, mind though?
We have the football, but I don't know, I don't believe we did the baseball.
We have a whole conquest.
Yeah.
Like the marsh.
I'm impressed you said Hurricane correctly.
So, any other questions for Mr. Isaac? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Molly, did you have some other questions outside of just the, the technical aspects of the baseball field?
Yeah, I, yeah, I do have a couple, variety of things. So, one, I guess I wanna know where we're drawing the funds for this, like with the other field, it was mostly bond money, so what are we thinking with this field? Where are we drawing the funds, care even that we do have the funds, et cetera, that's my first question.
So, a loaded question there.
It's a loaded question?
Yeah, very, so.
I didn't mean it to.
Sure. So, to start, it would have to be carryover funds, that's, that's where we're at right now. I mean, we did not budget for this at the beginning, but we do have carryover funds. Right now, what I would be comfortable with, with spending on outside projects, is probably in the four million, a little over four million dollar range. So, it's, you know, that's what I'm comfortable with, I can't, I'm not gonna sit here and say, "Yes, we have money for a baseball field," that is up to you all, not me.
But we have carryover funds sufficient to cover the cost of what that baseball field would be, within your comfort zone of carrying it over and expending those dollars?
Currently, yes, yeah, we have, we did have, I mean, we had a nice sized carryover, it was ten point five million, but we've gotta keep five percent of that back for reserve, it's four million. We all know that we're losing students, expenses are going up, revenues are going down, it's going to that, you know, not a great way right now.
Access properties are going down, I get it.
Right, I, I would, I would prefer more than five percent, I mean, and if five percent's four point two million, I would prefer probably somewhere in the six million dollar range, so that's where I'm getting my number from.
Okay.
The other thing I had, I talked to Rick about this last week as well, and I can see other schools, activities, groups, doing all this fundraising to raise money for whatever they're trying to do with their particular school. What can we do, you know, but then we're like, "Oh, okay, we're, we'll do, build this baseball field for one point three million dollars." What can we do to make sure that it's an equitable, or across the board, looking at different groups and different schools and saying, "Hey, what is, what is a big need that you have that we can fund for you in the next year, in the next two years?" You know, that they can come to the board and ask for, and know that we have actual, it's more than like, you know, five thousand dollars for this project, or for a teacher getting a grant for something. What can we, can we, or do we wanna talk about as a board, a way to kinda look at that process and say, "Hey, we do have these carryover funds, how can we be allocating them more broadly across our school system?" I think that's a good representation of what we talked about the other week.
Yeah.
So, that's something I just kinda wanted to bring up to the board, if we do have all these carryover funds, and we are willing to spend over a million dollars on more turf, which I'm not, I'm not opposed to, I think that facilities matter, I think that this field will get a lot of use, and, and I'm not opposed to it, but I wanna be able to look at it, and take a step back and look at it more broadly and say, are we meeting all of the needs across the county for all of our students, and will we be able to provide them with significant funding like we would be doing with the baseball field?
Well, and along those lines, Mr. Bennick, have we complied with what, up to this point? Have we complied with our, our bond call, and have we met those needs up to this point?
To date, to date, yes.
Oh, to date, I mean, of the thirteen facilities, seven are done, three are under construction, and three have not begun.
Correct.
So, we're on target at this point, so the bond money is meeting, meeting its needs, the needs of the county. And, you know, the other needs and, and, along with what this is, what Molly's saying is, I think it's important that we take a broad look at the county, making sure that the needs of educating our kids are met, and that to the extent that there are requests, I mean, how much are we paying to supply teachers with school supplies? Isn't it two hundred and some thousand, two hundred and twenty or so, Dr. Miller?
Yes, that's, I mean, there's, the, the, that's where we are at this time of year, in school supplies. And in regard to the other pieces of information, I think the bond work gave us the opportunity to hit a lot of those areas of need throughout the county. In addition to our bond, as you all know, we've, we've had additional enhancements at each, each of our schools to meet their needs and try to do, you know, anything extra that we can possibly do. So, I think that maybe a good idea is that we take a look at countywide and, and set a priority, and have a, a system as to how we go about addressing those projects.
Well, and we have some funds from the, from the federal government that's helping on some of these projects, and I think looking at the, the county footprint and saying, you know, what's the, how do we best deploy these funds for our kids and their benefit? I like the idea of focusing on projects, knowing that we can't count on excess funds year in and year out, that it's a one-time expenditure. You know, I think for year in and year out expenditures, you know, if we're trying to look to say, "Can we get another two and a half percent bump for, for employees?" We've got to find sustainable, you know, cash that is year in and year out. So, and I think we've just gotta keep those two concepts separate, that as we say, we have a significant carryover, we've got some funds from the feds that are deploying, and then freed up some other money. You know, let's, let's get these projects done now while we have those dollars, and I, I like the idea of saying, "Okay, here's our, if we were to have a, a wishlist with our excess, here's where we get the, the most bang for the buck within our county."
So, one thing, I just thought of this, I keep, I think of it, last week when we were talking about countywide, we have been making a, a list as we've gone through all these bond projects of things that need done in schools that we haven't been able to do. And our plan was, if, if there were money at the end of all these projects, to try to do one more bid package if we had a good carryover, or if we had it. This would be two years from now, that we would do one bid package that would clean up countywide things. So, we have been, I don't know if we have it written down, but in every school we go, there are things, for example, one that jumps out to me is Madison Elementary's gym. It's really, really bad, but we couldn't afford at the time to do what we used to do in there, with resurfacing it, with, it all needs painted, it's ugly, it has, and as the principal there said, she would really love to have that done, that's something that would kinda fall in this category. That, we started at that point, making a list of things for each school that we would try to do one last bid package at the end, if the money's there to address some of these things. And Mr. Attar Hall was talking about playgrounds and just different things like that, so some may need it, some may not, that kinda thing. So, that process has started a little bit, it just hit me that we have been doing that because Stephen doesn't get happy with it.
With all the buildings that we're doing, I think the best thing would be to finish the bond work for everybody, and as those things come up, to keep this, and then to start to attack those as we can. But it's foolish to say now, because we're in the middle of it all, the process to. But it's foolish to say now because we're in the middle of it all, the process to, to do that, so I, I would recommend we look at those later on as.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Things finish up, people don't know what they need until, you know, they've had, we've tried to give them everything they asked for in the beginning, and there are things that definitely be overlooked.
Well.
And things that we cut too, I think.
Yeah, and, and along those lines, I think now that we're down to the final six, we've gotta start working with Mr. Crum to figure out a schedule of continual maintenance.
Yes.
You know, when do we do roofs, when HVACs, when, you know, I, I, I really don't want to be part of a plan where we've asked the community for eighty million dollars to fix mostly deferred maintenance issues. We've done some great things, I don't mean to say otherwise, but the next time there's a bond, I'd like to, you know, pull the, the top off something amazing, not fixing, you know, steps that are crumbling or. Uh, handrails that, that should've been fixed ten years ago, or roofs that were ignored, so I think if we can start thinking in terms of putting together a schedule and budgeting for that. Um, and do that along with what, what Chris and Molly and Rick are suggesting is to say, look, you know, and, and, and early on in this process, it was a priority, I know, uh, when Molly and I were first joined and we passed the bond, is we don't want. To kill it at Madison and run out of Orwood.
Right, yeah.
You know, and just make sure that we communicate, because the public voted on the fir- thirteen facilities and what was laid out, and so we need to continue to try to comply with what, what, uh, they voted on when we put the bond call out there.
And when we first were on the board, that was one of the main concerns, what each time we had any expenditure was, how can we make sure that when we get to the end, every school got the same amount of money that they were supposed to get, and so. Just confirming that, um, you know, you feel confident, we feel confident that we're not gonna, you know, run out of any bond funds at the end and, and need to supplement more from the general funds than we may have available, that, that's all within your carryover that you're keeping, kinda keeping back.
Yeah, I think it's important to, that we consider all the schools too, because, uh, you know, nobody should get shortchanged in this.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I think, I think that was asked earlier, um, by Mr. Crum, but that's, that's just one of the concerns that I had to make sure, like, are we, you know, fairly confident that we're gonna meet all those obligations and then still have the, the carryover there that we need?
Well, a- any, anything that we have to add in to the bond project would have to come out of these carryover funds, so when you're talking about these last few projects, if there are funds that we have to add in, that's where it's coming from, I mean, that's just.
Yeah.
That's just the only way that it can be, I mean, because we have, we have done more work on, in certain places in the bond project that had very strongly been planned, for sure.
Um, let me see, sorry.
Hold on a second.
All the questions here, um, I think something to, to talk about too with this whole project is parking is, had, is and has been an issue up there with the, now softball players are playing up there, like you have the baseball players playing up there. Um, so, I think we needed to kinda be having some thoughts about, is there anything we can be doing as part of this to add some parking, whether it's in the hillside or, um, otherwise, you know, working on that sidewalk, if there's around the side of the pack. I just, I just wanna have a bigger, uh, you know, kinda take a step back and take a look at all of this, because if we're adding more activities up there, there's more cars, there, the parking situation is not.
But you're right, like, it's not a great place to walk along the pack.
It ends, it ends, the sidewalk ends and you're just, you're just walking in the street right on a blind curb.
And there is a, uh, there is a fence coming out that you have to step onto the road to get to the other side to go down that block, so, something along there.
So, I, that's why something that would go on that wishlist, because.
It's not a bad one.
Well, I know initially that, you know, there's been talk of getting a sidewalk going around the pack, coming from the sidewalk where it ends, but there was initially going to be an additional building on that backside too. So, at the time, something wasn't done with that, that that ends up being an open spot, we've already looked at the possibility of continuing the sidewalk down around the side, um.
Has that ever been drawn out?
As an extension, it hasn't been drawn out yet, no.
So, yeah, I think that's something that, you know, has to be add more people and more activities up there and thinking about the safety of guests and where everybody are. And then I, I'll, I'll tell the board, I've had some additional conversations with some people at Ogilvy about some of the tennis court conversations that we've had over the last couple of years about, um, working with them to potentially, um, be over at the Field One, uh, CrossFit Sun Court Shelter. And how we can do some sort of a community-wide project, um, similar to the field, maybe even incorporating additional community partners.
And they have fault tennis courts?
Yeah, so nothing, nothing is definite, but, you know, we've kinda had those conversations in the past, and I think that'd be a, a neat next facility to try to tackle if we could as a community.
I, I agree, and I, I think Ogilvy's been very receptive to those conversations, because you, you're gonna be changing hard true to hard courts, and then there's a cost to that.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Jones, he did that in Marshall County, didn't he, when you were there, you put in new tennis courts?
Yes, I, I, I don't know, I can't, how much they were, is that what you're asking me?
No, because it's gonna be completely different now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, it, you know, they'll, they'll come with a cost, I think.
It's about a hundred and fifty thousand a court.
Per court, yeah.
Per court?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that could go on the wishlist too, oh, that, that's a whole other, yeah, that's.
It is, but.
That's all, you know, I'm like, um.
It's terrible watch, a tennis game, I mean, my son played tennis, it was hard to watch.
And that, and that increases the, uh, ability for us to maybe do parking at the track, it, it helps up the track, I, I think it's a long-term goal, I think it'd be kinda cool if we could do that, so. Nothing, yeah, you know, nothing on great at all, but I just, I've talked to a couple of people, kinda just, hey, it would be cool, like conversations.
I had a lot of this Saturday.
What's that?
I had a lot of this Saturday.
Okay.
Please choose everywhere.
So.
Guys.
So something to be thinking about, you know, in long-term planning, like what, what do we want, what are we looking at as a board over the next ten years, let's say, you know, with all these carryover funds?
Right. Well, like.
What are some of the big projects that we would love to see happen, uh, for me, I would, I wanna change the start times if we can, you know, everyone says that's gonna be a couple million dollars, like, okay, well, are we gonna have a couple million dollars if we think it's feasible to do it? Um, so I think I wanna look long-term as we move forward on, on what we're gonna do with our.
Mr. Isaac said, with a field, you may be penny wise and pound foolish by not pulling that out because you have larger space and.
Oh, I, one more thing, um, if we, if we end up doing the, the baseball field, could we line it for multiple sports, I think that would increase its use kinda like the softball field, so then, you know, and it's not baseball season, and lacrosse be out there and. What, you know, whatever, I think if it might be, make a lot of sense, we're adding a turf surface, could we line it for additional sports, same as the softball field was lined, uh, just give it that much more usefulness for our students and our community?
Fair question.
That's what I'm first thinking about.
Have you ever seen baseball fields lined for multi-use? So that, that is possible.
I know the Oklahoma Coliseum in the NFL, where they play football on a baseball diamond, I don't know if I've ever seen it.
It, it, in that, in the, that artificial turf rule, I mean, if you can imagine it, it's probably been done. I, I've seen it at, you know, the D three level, where they did their murals in the, outside of baseball field, 'cause they already had like four sports on their football field, and they didn't want all those lines on it. You could do tick marks so that if you choose to paint them on, you could paint them on if you wanted to, with like a, you know, a fading paint, there's a lot of options you can do.
So within that footprint, there could be multi-field use, uh, and, and that for us, I think, ha- helps us better get our arms around that cost, that it would have multiple uses instead of a singular use, because we already have a multi-use field. Uh, if we can continue to create additional uses that are not only available for high county schools, but our community, um, I think that is beneficial to everybody and helps justify the cost.
That, that, that wouldn't make a big difference for me, I know with the multipurpose field that we just did, a lot of that was bond money, it's, uh, you know, it was, we were gonna have turf at the, as part of the bond, and we're gonna fix the softball field, and when we decided to combine them, it became multi-use, and to me, that did help justify it quite a bit, because there's so many, there's like seven different groups of students who can use that. Field, you know, two, boys and girls across, boys and girls soccers, girls softball, PE students, you know, students from the community, um, the band, so if we can do something similar with the baseball field, or at least it's opened up to a couple more groups of students, that, I think that does justify it. And then if we are, which we are, would be using the Wheeling Park Commission's land, they would be, again, granting us a lease, we've already signed a.
Right.
Long-term lease on some of the land, but making it something that's available to multiple, um, groups of, of youth throughout the community, uh, in a variety of sports, I think that helps justify it to the community as well.
Yeah.
So.
Anything else, Molly?
Uh, it seems we've been getting pretty far away from the agenda here.
Well, no, that, that deals with the baseball field and the use of it, so it's right on the agenda. Pete, you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Uh, all right, uh, we'll move on to personnel, Dr. Miller.
Uh, yes, just wanna highlight a couple of items on, um, the agenda, Celeste Marshall was retired from a position as a two hundred day county wide AP to a master's degree at Elm Grove Elementary School, and all other personnel as presented.
Any questions for Dr. Miller on personnel matters? Hearing none, may have a motion to accept the personnel recommendations as presented?
So, second.
Uh, okay, Pete, uh, raises a second, uh, any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Uh, item eight, uh, I'm going to make a recommend that we move into executive session pursuant to West Virginia Code six dash nine eight four for an employee hearing, may I have a first?
Summoned.
Second, uh, Chris is the second, so a motion by Molly, second by Chris, to go into executive session in accordance with West Virginia Code six nine eight four for an employee hearing. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.